Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the January session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. This time, I would ask anyone who has a mobile device, anything that could make noise, turn it off or to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. We've just got a few housekeeping things we have to do to begin for January, and one is the election of its officers. So this time, before we get to the minutes, we will go ahead and give consideration for the election of officers, starting with the chairman, if we have a nomination.
I'll nominate Jody Palmer as chairman.
Sir.
We have a motion to nominate Jody Palmer as chairman. We have a second from Mr. Leggett. The motion was made by Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. And then we have a vice chairman. If I can have a nomination and a motion.
Make a motion for Mr. Leggett.
I have a motion for Mr. Leggett by Mr. Steele. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence. This time, we'll entertain a motion with regard to the minutes. Prior to that, is there any concerns with the previous session of the minutes? Everybody's had a chance to review them. So do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes.
A motion to approve from Mr. Steele. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wicks. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. I'd remind Planning Commission members, please, if you do speak during the proceedings, to turn your mic on, make sure everybody can hear. I'm gonna ask Chris, if he would, if he would go ahead and address the amendments to the agenda.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year. Welcome, Mr. Callahan, to the board. Thank you, sir. There's three applications that's been moved to the February meeting. It's 2401Z City of Hiram. It's Adam Rosen. This is a request to rezone nine acres from R2 and B2 to R55 Active Adult Residential within the City of Hiram. That one's been forwarded for some site plan updates and access to the site discussion. An applicant, SUP for Event Center on Lake Road at Greenfield Road, that one's been forwarded. That was a request from the applicant's representative for more input by the property owner. The other application is 2403 SUP. This is an application that was forwarded to February also. This is 7.49 acres. They're requesting a special use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage facility. That's off of Dallas Actworth Highway and Royal Sunset Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Yes, I do want to extend a welcome to Mr. Callahan, who's joining us on behalf of the City of Dallas. Yes, sir. No, I need you to sign the minutes. So at this time, I'm going to proceed with the agenda with the zoning ordinance text amendment and ask Director Lippman if she would come around to introduce those changes.
I have a PowerPoint presentation, so let's give it a few minutes to get this going, hopefully.
Okay, if you recall back in August of 2023, the county enacted a moratorium on gas stations, gas stations with convenience store. And since then, the Planning and Zoning Division of Community Development has done a gas station analysis and just want to go over that with you all this afternoon. And hopefully, since this is our only agenda item, we can have some thorough discussion about gas stations. The current ordinance, as a reminder, we utilize, in most instances, the North American Industrial Classification System for our property, our uses in all the zoning districts. The current permitted use is gasoline stations. I'm not going to read the definition, but essentially, that code, the 4571, allows for gas stations with convenience stores. It also allows other gasoline stations, such as a marine service station or a truck stop. Currently, in the zoning ordinance, gasoline stations are a permitted use in the B2 zoning district, and they are a special exception use in the neighborhood business and B1 zoning districts. And you can see there below what those requirements are. If you were to have a gas station in neighborhood business or B1, the building cannot exceed 3,000 square feet, and no automotive repairs are allowed. This next map, we did a thorough search. We compared our business license data along with zoning data going back about five to six years. So we have this map that is showing all the existing or planned gas stations in the county. We'll probably come back to this map later. So then, we kind of broke those down into four different kinds of gasoline stations. We have those gasoline stations that are affiliated with a grocery store or a general merchandise store. That's Kroger, Ingalls, and Costco. The picture up there is a picture of the Costco fuel facility. They're on 120. The next type of gas station is a standalone gas station that can, has a convenience store attached. It's all one. There's no retail outlets. In the county, we have 18 of those. You can see the zoning districts. We do have a few that are probably from days preceding zoning and have somehow ended up zoned R2. We have 18 existing ones. I believe there is one that's being renovated, and we have eight proposed. This example is a BP station that's located also on Highway 120. The next type is a multi-business gasoline station. So it's a gas station with convenience store that also has separate suites in there. Somewhat ironically, or not ironically, we also have 18 of those and eight proposed. There was a fourth category. I'm not showing it. It was just a standalone convenience store. When we started this process, we had two. We are under the understanding that one of those has since closed, so we are left with just one. It is in the New Georgia area where Publix is. It's in that shopping center. We reached out to Dallas and Hiram so we could try to get a total number of gas stations located within the entire county. Our research focused on unincorporated Paulding County. Dallas has nine gas stations and one proposed, and Hiram has eight. One of the things that we wanted to look at and see, were there any industry standards? Was there any, this is how many gas stations you should have. I found two examples. One was 35 gas stations per 100,000 people. Based on that, Paulding County would need 61, and we currently, between Dallas, Hiram, and Paulding County, have 75. Another option, another standard was one station per 1,000 vehicles, and that would generate a need of 146 stations. I think that's a little high. One of the things that I kind of wish we'd done when we started doing this analysis, when I drove around, I would be like, oh, that one has two. Oh, that one has 30. That one has eight pumps. So it was kind of, you know, be interesting to see how many pumps they were, but sometimes you can, analysis paralysis, so we didn't go that far. So some recommendations. I love a picture. I think the picture on the bottom corner is maybe the gas station of the future, and the one on the top left is probably the gas station of the past. But after reviewing everything, when we adopted the UDO, we wanted to utilize the NAICS terminology, and we didn't, we didn't want to keep it too long. And sort of the good thing about using NAICS was you could get a major category and include all those uses without listing those uses. The main example I would use is you don't want to say you permit hair salons, you permit barber shops, you permit nail salons, when those all fall in one category. But in some instances, the specificity, you might want to drill down a level. So at this point, we would recommend striking a few definitions, that of food and beverage retailers, except liquor retailers, grocery and convenience retailers, and gasoline stations, and that we replace those with some more specific definitions of convenience retailers, gasoline stations with convenience stores, supermarkets and other grocery retailers, except convenience retailers, and truck stops. And we have some revisions to each of the commercial zoning districts and several of the industrial zoning districts. Everybody should have a sheet. One of the things we looked at, to be honest, when we converted all of the zoning districts from the old 2003 zoning ordinance to the UDO, we took the purpose and intent, and we copied and pasted. When I started looking at those, I think there should be a distinction between neighborhood business, B1, and B2. So we are proposing to revise the purpose and intent of all three of those commercial zoning districts. At this point, for neighborhood business, we would like to strike from the special exception uses, food and beverage retailers and gasoline stations, and we would like to move specialty food retailers and supermarkets as a special exception use, and the special exception use for both of those would limit that size to 15,000 square feet. Changes we are recommending to B1, again, to change the purpose and intent, we would remove grocery and convenience retailers, tobacco, electronic, cigarette, and other smoking supply stores. I meant to take that out. We'll talk about the used merchandise at the end. And we would strike from special exceptions, gas stations, a category that we're recommending. When you look at the five, the gas stations that are associated with either a grocery store or a general merchandise store, to me, that doesn't, we recommend that be a special exception to be part of that, like, I buy gas at Kroger, to have the gas as part of Kroger, or Ingalls, or Walmart. So we recommend making that a special exception use, and the requirement be that it's located on the same piece of property. And we would be converting gasoline stations with convenience stores and tobacco, electronic, cigarette, and other smoking supply stores to special use permits. I'm gonna kind of skip over Planned Shopping Center real quick. Planned Shopping Center, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, and B1 have the same permitted uses, and there is currently nothing zoned Planned Shopping Center in Paulding County. The Planned Shopping Center we have is exclusively located in Hiram. So that would be the same changes to B1, since they have the same list of uses. Changes to B2, again, update the purpose and intent, remove some of the similar permitted uses that we've discussed before, add to permitted uses, the specialty food retailers and supermarkets and other grocery retailers. We split those up because if you use the big category, convenience stores become part of that. So especially, food retailer would be a meat market, someone who just sells meat, or a vegetable store that just sold vegetables. Again, we'd add the fuel pumps accessory to a supermarket or general merchandise retailer, and the same two new special use permit uses. Currently, gas stations are not a permitted conditional or any kind of use in an I-1 district, and I don't think that that would be a bad use, so we recommend incorporating gas stations as well as truck stops, since changing the definitions, truck stops would not be the same as a gas station. And we would like to add truck stops as a special use permit in I-2. For those uses that would become a special exception, we would be removing gas stations from NBNN1. We would be inserting the fuel pumps accessory to the supermarkets, the specialty food retailers, and the supermarket in neighborhood business. And as far as special use permits, we would be adding gas stations with convenience stores, tobacco, electronic, cigarette, and other smoking supply stores, and truck stops to that list. When you change a zoning use, there's a couple other things that need changing, and that's mainly the parking requirements. So we would be updating the parking requirements for these new uses. And whenever we do a text amendment, we seem to always find a few little errors here and there, so we have noted the need for a definition for automotive parts, accessories, and tire retailers. We need to correct the numbering for religious organizations instead of 1, 2, 3, it's 4, 5, 6. And we've had, we've noticed in the agricultural business, it had a minimum lot size of one acre, and we think it would be better suited for agricultural business to be like agricultural and have a five-acre minimum. Another observation that we made, and certainly open to discussion, flea markets require a special use permit, but used merchandise stores do not, and they are currently permitted uses in neighborhood business, B1, PSC, and B2. So open to discussion on if we wanted to move used merchandise stores to also be a special use permit. And that is the end of our gas station analysis, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or facilitate any discussion about gas stations.
Okay, I have a question on the agricultural part of it you were just discussing. A lot of the convenience stores and businesses around the county are, during the summer, allow stands on their property to sell produce. How would that fall in the, because you're going from one to five acres on agricultural?
Well, agricultural business, if you remember, was a new zoning district that we created, and to date, nothing has been zoned that. So this is, that's just trying to correct something that we've received. We realized that we were telling people that they could have a riding stable on a minimum of one acre. The produce at a convenience store falls under our temporary use requirement, so it wouldn't be affected.
What would an ag business be? What example can you give of an ag business that would require the one to five?
Well, riding stable is a permitted use. That's where some of...
So if you got someone that has a business that has children that come in and ride horses, that's what business they would fall under?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll just hit some of them. Botanical gardens, breeders, construction, farm machinery and equipment repair maintenance services, forestry and logging, greenhouse, nursery, floriculture production, riding stables, and some of the special exception use. For example, we allow pharmaceutical and medicine manufacturing, because in some instances, it is agriculturally based. So it's agricultural business. That one's short. I'll just, it's established to provide locations intended to preserve and promote agricultural-related business and activities, A-B is appropriate in conservation or rural conservation areas. So sawmills, temporary produce stands are allowed there, farm wineries, breweries. It was one of our new zoning districts, and just when we started looking at it, we thought a five-acre minimum to match the A1 agricultural would be best.
But we haven't seen anybody even approach us to go to that zoning category yet. Correct.
We actually have had discussions on some uses that may work in this category better than a commercial or a agricultural district.
Or industrial.
Or an industrial.
I just couldn't think of one. I was thinking of businesses that would fall under that. I mean...
I could see like a person that's gonna grow like corn for you to come on their property and pick like they do musky dimes and things like that. But a five acre seems to be a pretty, pretty high total to require something like that. If I had an acre land I wanted to sell some sweet corn on, and people came in to buy it, looks like it would be acceptable in that category.
One thing about anyone that's, that has a home garden, and they're gonna sell some corn or something on an acre or two, they still could do that as a temporary use. I mean, they still would have that. Wouldn't, they wouldn't have to rezone it. This is when you get into a big business type agricultural producers, and a lot of, a lot of them around here with horse farms and kennels and everything, that gave something that they could go to that would provide that use within a certain area than categories we had in the past that may allow more controversial type uses.
Does the five acres, I mean, is it, is that uniform with like other municipalities? I mean, is that, how do we, I mean, how do we, how do we come up with five? I mean...
We picked five because that's what the minimum lot size in A1 is.
Right, okay.
So you can...
I'm just like Mr. Leggett. It feels, you know, I think we're missing maybe thinking of who might use it. Who's gonna be the first one to come in and say, hey, I only have three acres, but it makes sense what they do, and they don't need five.
Well, then, on the flip side, if you don't like that idea, I do think that the riding stables perhaps should be moved to be a special exception with a minimum of five acres.
You'd think a riding stable would have more than five acres, though. I'm thinking more of a, where you get tripped up in the definitions...
Something consumable that people consume, I could see.
Right. That if you go to like a farm supply store, or something that's more what I think of agricultural, not a landscape supply store, but they may not need five acres to open, you know, an ag supply business. Just a thought.
And I agree.
Well, that was an unintended consequence. While we were doing a text amendment, we can certainly do a little bit more research on the minimum lot size. I don't think we've had, I mean, if you had a riding stable in A1, you would need five acres. But if you had it in AB, you would need one, and we're just not that sure. I don't know if even one horse on one acre is the appropriate size. So perhaps that is one that we could delay for now and do a little more research on.
I could see that, well, also with the kennels. We've had several kennels that we, you know, I agree with five acres on that, but, you know, if, like I said, consumable items, blackberries, stuff like that, looks like it would be excessive, and, but you say it's got a, it can fit into that other category where it's allowed.
Let's see, let's look at A1. See, I think the only place we have riding stables is in AB. It's not listed as a permitted use specifically in A1. So maybe for now, the better text amendment would be to move riding stables to a special exception and require five acres, rather than just change the entire lot size for AB.
Yeah, because I think the riding stable probably would need that big of a piece of property versus some other smaller use, but...
That's, we could certainly make that change.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be a small riding stable, five acres of grass with a horse. More than one horse is, it's gonna be hard to, you know, feed a horse with just that amount of property. And what about the kennels? What is our minimum on it now?
Kennels is, let's see, it's a special exception. Kennels, provided all outdoor runs, fences, and related building structures shall be located no less than 200 feet from any property line. So...
But it didn't say any kind of acreage.
No.
Okay. I would think that that would be a category that would require a minimum of two to five acres, something like that. What do y'all think?
I wouldn't be opposed to it. I think the 200 feet from any property line kind of pushes it up in acreage anyway, if you hold fast to that buffer. Yeah, you can send it at a hard five or greater.
Or we could, we could...
Any objection?
Do a little more research.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, because I, I think, you know, the meat of this particular text amendment, that the ag change there is probably minute compared to some of the other things that we saw.
Yes.
And we get to that discussion.
Love to have some lively debate about gas stations.
Right, about gas stations. I think we're gonna, we're gonna have more comments about that, but I would, I would say on the ag part, maybe pull it and relook at it.
We can start to do that.
I agree.
If you, if you had a lot coming in that were objected, you know, or you felt, it just may need a little more study. But since we brought the other one up, I'll go ahead and ask the question about the other one. I think some of the concern that's gonna come out of the other one is a special use permit required on the B2 zonings. So a couple of questions on that. If a special use is required, it's required with gas stations as defined in the definitions that we've used. You had, the majority of them had gasoline attached to them, but there was two uses of convenience stores in the county that didn't, and we talked about one closing. But any B2 that anyone brought before us looking to do a gasoline station is gonna now require a special use, if I read it correct. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So following that question would be, what about ones that we may have seen in the last few years at, in front of this board and the Board of Commissioners that have already been approved for a gasoline station? That was their primary use that they showed us. Will they have to come back for a special use if it hasn't been built, or if it's in process of being designed, or being funded, or...
I'm gonna, Mr. Phillips is gonna address that. Essentially, where he starts, each one would have to be handled on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Yes, each one, each case is gonna be factually specific. The issue that you are alluding to is the doctrine of what they call vested rights, where a particular property is, the zoning is changed, you know, whatever it happens to be, and you, let's say you're the holder of that property, and you rezoned it five years ago. During the intervening five years, the property has not changed its state at all. You've not applied for any permits related to constructing what you proposed to build. The courts have determined there's about four categories where vested rights may exist, and they're various fact-specific inquiries. Where you have vested rights, then you're entitled to move forward with the zoning prior to the change. However, if you have no rights that have been vested on the property, even where you've changed your zoning classification, that classification can be changed once again by text amendment without impairing any rights that you have. Otherwise, all property would be frozen in time based upon the status of the zoning law that existed at the time you sought rezoning. That's why in some areas, everything may be R2, and over a course of 30 years, the county changes its character, changes its development trends, and then a lot of it gets rezoned. Just because it was all R2 at one time doesn't mean there can't be a text amendment changing half of that R2 to something else. The only rights that will be preserved are those rights that are vested, and the courts determine which are vested.
And have we done, have we looked at anything? Is there any count of what might have been recently rezoned, or...
We have done a count of what has been. We probably went back five or six years. We did not look at every, and we could potentially do it before this goes to the Board of Commissioners. We did not look at every piece of commercially zoned property and determine, was this rezoned for a gas station in 2000, and has it been developed? We looked at rezonings going back a couple years, so that's where we got the list of what's proposed. In a bigger spreadsheet, we have the dates of when it was rezoned and the stats... In a bigger spreadsheet, we have the dates of when it was rezoned and the status of what they've submitted. So we know that some of them were rezoned to B2 for a gas station and have submitted for a land disturbance permit. Some have resubmitted, they've gotten a land disturbance permit, they've submitted for a building permit. Some of them are under construction. That's, didn't wanna put too much in the presentation, but we, we have that information. But we did not go back more than five or six years.
If this passes this board and the Board of Commissioners, is there a timeframe on acceptance of dates? I mean, will we see a rush of stuff coming in or could we?
I don't think we could because the moratorium, the way it was worded, you could not unless you had already submitted plans. We couldn't accept plans either. So if you were to submit, if this were approved, Jason, jump in if I get wrong. If you submit plans for a B2 property, we'd probably have to look at it and see when was this rezoned and determine if they were vested. And they may be advised that they would need to get a special use permit. If it moves forward.
I was gonna say, a moratorium is not going to bar every scenario. But a moratorium is gonna prevent the vesting of rights after the moratorium goes into place. And again, it's, it's all, it's all very fact-specific. And the courts, Georgia Supreme Court has spoken clearly on how they view what is vested and what is not.
Are there any safety standards or, um, I've noticed in a lot, several convenience stores around the county that when you approach the front of the counter, you, you've just barely got walking room between all these racks with all this smoking supplies and all these other various things that are around on, on the displays right there against the counter. You just got just enough walking room to get up there. If an incident happened outside or inside the, the thing, you've got a bad, bad day, a bad safety issue there. And there's others like the gentleman there in the back that has his convenience stores. You've got walking room in his stores. I've, I've been in several his stores. But there are some in the county that you just barely can get in because of either the, the machines, the game machines or other things that are blocking the front of the store. That's something I think needs to be looked at maybe by the farmer, county farmer.
I would think that would be something, falls under the farmer's.
We could adopt some kind of thing because we did have a vehicle that almost made it into a store in just over a year ago. The gas pump stopped it basically before it entered the building. They were very lucky. Accidents happen, things do happen. And, you know, if, are they gonna have access to get in and out of, out of the, uh, convenience stores could be a big issue. That would be something we might need to look at also.
And that was why I didn't put it in the presentation. It was in the analysis. We, we did research on what some other jurisdictions who have requirements above. In a lot of jurisdictions, um, just several of our neighbors, Cobb County, Cherokee County, Gwinnett County, a gas station is a permitted use in their general commercial, their equivalent to our general commercial zoning district. So we did not include a lot of those because that is in a lot of places, what we have now, that is what they have as well. What we sought to find was some jurisdictions that had, had put some additional requirements for gas stations. And at the end of the day, um, some of them are great, some of them are not great. We thought making it a special use, we could look at each site on a site-specific basis and some of those examples we have might become a stipulation to getting the zoning and/or special use permit approved.
I, I was just recently, in the last couple of years in Cincinnati, Ohio, and you don't see, even in a town that size, you don't see the gas stations around in that metro area like you do just in Polton County. You really have to hunt, find a, a gas station up there and it's a tremendous difference, you know, that they don't have them on every corner like we do. It seems like anyway. But, uh, that was, that is one of my main concerns, just the safety issue of, of what happens if something does happen. Because some of them are so packed in with merchandise that, uh, it could be a, a real safety issue.
And we can certainly reach out to the farmer's show and see what, um, building codes and life safety codes regulate that.
Can you elaborate on the, there was one in your presentation talking about neighborhood business and it was 3,000 square feet. So we've seen, or B1, 3,000 square feet. So we've seen one come in before where they wanted to exceed the 3,000 feet. And so they looked at B2 as an option instead of B1 to go to a 5,000 square foot building because it met their needs for what their, their business plan was. Can you go over that one again? Like, is this 3,000 still gonna be there? I mean, at one point you talked about a grocery- Okay.
The 3,000-
What was the 15,000 square feet on a grocery retailer? I mean, that's gonna be your-
That's a neighborhood business.
Okay.
And just the average size of a Trader Joe's is 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. And it was kind of the questions you're asking why I decided to change the purpose and intent. I think, um, if you really read the name, the purpose and intent of neighborhood business, B1, which is general commercial and B2 highway commercial, I couldn't tell, if I didn't read the title at the top, I couldn't really tell the difference. In my mind, a neighborhood business should serve one neighborhood. I'll, the example of the shops at Bentwater. I bet you that is most exclusively for the residents of Bentwater. You go down the street and where the public shopping center is, it is owned B2, but it could be B1 'cause that kind of pulls from several neighborhoods in that area. I know the Kroger on Ridge Road is owned B1. And it's, and I, once you get to highway commercial, you should probably really be on a state or a federal highway because that is probably, in this instance, more in Hiram in Dallas, but that's your target and your planned shopping center. So that's, we wanted to put a little more specificity on what neighborhood business is, what general business is and what highway business is.
So is, is this removing the option to do a gas station in a neighborhood business zoning?
The recommendation, yes.
Okay. Uh, but not in B1? The B1, B1 would still have a square footage requirement?
No, it would just be a special use.
Okay. And then the special uses for B1 and B2 are gonna follow. We'll do those up here. We'll see the zoning and then we'll see the special use follow right behind it.
Correct. Similar to storage.
Legally, when we see those, maybe a question, Mr. Phillips, and are other special uses, is there a way to roll those into one? I mean, we always do the zoning and then we follow the special use right after. I would like to think we're not gonna approve a zoning and then turn around and, you know, deny a, a special use. If we've seen the plan and see what they're doing and understand what they're doing and it meets what we require.
I don't want to oversimplify rolling it into one. Uh, clearly though, we can handle them concurrently with one another.
Okay.
So that we hear both at the same time.
And that's what we typically do now.
Right, right. And I think that the UDO specifically contemplates that.
Okay.
Um, you know, it is, I'm, I'm often asked the question, can we vote on all these people at one time? It's like, yeah, sure, if you're gonna vote to approve them all or deny them all. But if you wanna approve one and deny another, you're gonna have to take them separately. Most of the time, it's, what I've seen is you're either gonna approve both or deny both.
Correct.
But sometimes when you deny the first one, there's no real reason to go for the second one. But I'd rather see you vote on the second one just so the applicant has a decision in place.
I think you do also run the possibility, as rare as it may be, where you're in agreement with the initial application to rezone the property, but with a special exception, you're looking at a nuanced change or something where you may agree with most of it and you're willing to make a change with some condition. At least that's the way I-
Right.
I think it should, would be.
The other, I mean, conversation you and I had yesterday just about, I mean, looking at the word flea market, but let's look, look at the used merchandise. So that other recommended change of changing some of the definitions. Did, used merchandise? What would be a used merchandise retailer?
Um, our definition of flea market, I, I think the big, best way to make a distinction is a flea market is an event. A flea market is not a daily occurring business. It is an event that occurs. We refer to the state's definition and the state's definition clearly, it makes it clear that a flea market is an event. And it also makes clear, 'cause it includes swap meets, and it also provides for, you're gonna have multiple vendors in a flea market. A used merchandise store, Goodwill is a used merchandise store. An antique store is a used merchandise store. A used bookstore would be a used bookstore. It's just in, you know, when we do a text amendment, um, just wanna have a little discussion if we think a used merchandise store is something that should be a permitted use or should it not?
You're talking about like used refrigerators, used washing machines?
Anything that's-
But you could say thrift stores or consignment stores or any of those.
Using the next terminology, I, I think that's where the difference between a flea market and a used merchandise store is a flea market is an event that's gonna have multiple vendors versus a used merchandise store, which is pretty simply a store. I mean, it could sell used books or used comic books or, I mean, I use the example of Goodwill. And this might be one that needs a little more research along with the AB.
And the way you propose it here is to, to move it from those categories but, or, or leave it in those categories but require a special use?
Right.
Okay. So really the difference is just adding the special use?
Right.
Okay. I was a little confused. Not about a flea market. I go to flea market. You know that.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the planning commission to the director?
And before, if you're, before you're ready to vote or ask any other questions, before this goes to the Board of Commissioners, I think using GIS, we could try to isolate, I honestly, we only did go back about five years to see what zonings had been proposed. We could, um, determine which properties are zoned, especially B2, and see if there'd been any in the past. I was, it was, one was brought to my attention yesterday that was rezoned in 2000 that needs to be on our list. We simply just didn't go back that far. But we could isolate the properties on B1 or B2 that are vacant and, you know, cross-reference with their zoning cases and see if, um, the intended use was a gas station. A lot of times we find some historical ones, they just rezoned it to B2, period. No what for, no why, just B2. But we could, we could certainly-
But we see instances where, where something was brought to us and we rezoned it B2 with one use and may not, and I think this is where it's going, I mean, where, where I see it is, yes, we, we were okay with it being this particular use. But now this use may affect it different and then what the intention, so putting this special use doesn't remove it from the category.
And I think even with some changes we made to the UDO, we have site-specific zoning. If you came to me to rezone a piece of property for a restaurant and you rezoned it B2 and you just couldn't make the restaurant work and you said, eh, I think I'll just build a gas station. We, we have some language in the UDO now that's more like, well, you said you were gonna build a restaurant. A gas station is not a restaurant. We have a whole new application process called a site amendment. So you could come in and it would go back before the planning commission for recommendation of the Board of Commissioners on that site amendment.
I have one other on the convenience stores. Um, the gambling machines, is there a certain limit that we could, that we do have on them? Or is there something that can be proposed? Because you could technically have a convenience store that has two gas pumps and 15 of the gambling machines and make more money off the gambling machines than you do the gas pumps. And you would still be considered a gas station.
That's, well, I kind of wished we could have figured out how many pumps there were, but it, it really doesn't matter. But Jason, I might, I don't, I think the state and the machines and the state regulated.
Yes, the state, through the State Lottery Commission regulates coin-operated amusement machines. And within the category of COAMs, coin-operated amusement machines, there are two categories, I believe. I think it's class one and a class two or class A and class B. Can't remember what it is. But the state has specifically authorized cities and counties to regulate, uh, your video poker machine-type COAM. And I wanna say it's nine to 11 different areas where they specifically authorized it. It's my legal opinion is that that's where you have the, where the county has the authority to regulate those. Beyond that, I believe the state controls that through the lottery commission.
So it's basically a lot of it is like-
Number, you, you, you asked about number. Number is one of the areas where the county can regulate it.
Okay. Because I know it's a lot of, like a lot of other things in the state that have inspectors and going around. They may hit that one place, uh, one time a year. And the other 364 days that, you know, pretty well do what they want to. So that's reasonable. I was, I was wondering if there was another regulation possibility if it, if the county can do that.
That's, there's another legal opinion that says that you can regulate it all through zoning. But my legal opinion is that's subject to challenge because the General Assembly has specifically said this is where counties can regulate these, it's like nine to 11 areas. And they've set out how the county can do it. Uh, and beyond that, there's an argument that I think the COAM industry's gonna make is that that's an ultra virus act for a county to go beyond what the General Assembly has authorized it to do. On the flip side, I wanna get into a big legal discussion here. The zoning power does come from the Georgia Constitution and it's granted specifically to counties and municipalities to engage in zoning regulation to control the uses of land. So there's a, there's a case there potentially to be made one day in the court. And I don't know how that's gonna come down ultimately.
Are we, and, and, and your recommendations on five for business one, or B1, general business and B2 highway business, where your permitted uses, you're striking definitions and replacing them. Does that eliminate some of those things in that definition?
They were, um, they overlapped. Um, a food and retail is the same as a grocery store or supermarket.
Okay.
We had just duplicated, so we were just trying to clean up. So we didn't create confusion by having a use essentially listed twice.
Okay. Yeah, just it was-
But, but you do have like angles and some of the others, how both have food and the retail that they, you know, sell on there. Does that, that still cover them? Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions to the director? Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a question. And I was able to spend some time with Chris and Ann this morning. But I did not ask, uh, do we have a comprehensive plan for every roadway and byway in Polton County? I mean, is everything covered in the county?
Every road has a classification, right, George? Yeah. Every road is can, 'cause we have definitions. Let me see if I can do it off the top of my head. We have local roads, collectors, arterials, um, and interstates. So every road that's not an interstate, which we have none of, so if it's not an arterial or a collector, it's a local street.
So we have a comprehensive plan for all of that? So my, my observation would be as far as two, two boards, a planning commission and a board of commissioners. If we have a comprehensive plan, kinda like we discussed this morning, then, then we already know what we think is best located there. Maybe to bank off the Cincinnati example, why they didn't have so many, uh, gas stations is because they had a plan that there were very few areas where that's where they, what they wanted to have.
So they stuck with it, I assure you, 'cause we were looking, trying to find one just to, to fill up on. So we, we got real worried.
So my, my observation or, uh, I think goal, vision for the county is to have that plan and enforce that plan. And if a special use permit takes care of that, then I think it'd be a good thing this, this, uh, passage of this would be a good thing. What do y'all think?
Well, an example that I can think of, uh, that I've seen, um, just some of the past zonings that might have been, I think, there was one in 1969, it doesn't have to do with gas stations, but it does have to do with truck parking. And because it, something was blanketed in, I think it was 1969, uh, they was allowed to, just, they, they hadn't come in front of us. So now there's a truck parking because it was in zone industrial- because it was in zone industrial, that's in really, in my opinion, the residential area. But because that zoning was there, if you go to Yorkville, there's four gas stations within a quarter mile that, if it came in front of us, we probably would ask a lot of questions and determine, do we need that meaning in that small area? So the special use permit just gives us the opportunity to control what is already zoned, because there is some, I can say there's a lot, but there is, there is zonings out there that could've been from 20, 30 years ago, you know? That might've been zoned something, and it has failed, but it's still zoned B one or B two, or whatever. But, but, like I said, that, if, if we don't have a special use permit, it's automatic pretty much for them. So it just gives us the opportunity to try to plan, to, to make them go with our plan, you know?
And the, the map that, let me zoom back out, this is the supporting policy map. So if you'll notice, the roads that are highlighted in pink, that's what's called a community character corridor. And the intent in the comprehensive plan is to protect that corridor as it currently is. Now, it might be zoned commercial in some spots, but it might not. And so if you look at, just as an example, let's not look out west, let's look further up here. Chris, have we ever even gotten a request for a, because I think that road at the top is Dabs Bridge. Have we ever gotten a request for a gas station? I don't think the northwest corner of the county on Dabswood Road, I don't think that's a need for a gas station up there. And by that being a protected community character corridor, somebody came in and wanted to build one, that would give Chris some tools to say, it, it's, you need this zoning, you need a special use permit, but our comprehensive plan, we're not gonna recommend this.
Isn't, isn't at the intersection of Dabs Bridge and Harmony Church Grove, isn't there something on that northeast corner?
Yes, but that's a crossroad community.
Okay.
So that's...
Yeah, you'd have to tear down two houses to build one up there now.
Probably more than two.
But your comp plan in general, I mean, a comp plan in general, ours and the other counties that are required to do it, I mean, we specify what we project to be a growth type in the area by categories.
Yes.
And in this category, if it showed B two, and a, and a use under B two's a gas station, we're just adding the special use on top of that.
And each purpose and intent tells you which, this is the supporting policy map. There's also the future land use map that has the rural category and the conservation category, and if it's not, that's, it's just a tool that the county's worked on, citizens have input on, that says, this is how we want our county to look. Like, this supporting policy map is where we have a growth boundary. Not a lot of people have a growth boundary. That is the board who adopted this in 2022 saying, this is the boundary we're, and, and our comp plan is based on sewer basins, where they made a concerted effort to say, we don't want high-intensity growth west of this boundary. I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty forward-thinking. Not a lot of people in Georgia have a growth boundary.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would like to say that I like where Roger was going with the other restrictions we could put on the COAMs, and I think that should be addressed perhaps before we vote on it, or something that, some of those restrictions should, you know, might should be put in. So I would like for the board to consider that, because there are some that are listed as our attorney says, that are permissible under state law. And it just seems advisable, while we're in this section doing this work, that that should be addressed.
And you're speaking directly to limiting the number at a facility, or...
I, I don't remember what all of them are. I remember that was one of them, there were, how many, if I could ask our attorney, how many there are that are permissible to, it seemed like there were about four or five.
Just looking at the statute right now, there are 11 provisions that the general assembly has authorized a county to issue, or to, to, to enact ordinances. The first one is probably of most interest. It says prohibiting the offering to the public of more than six class B machines. So there is a, there is a express authorization by the state that a county can cap the max machines, the class B machines at six. And class B machines are really what you're talking about when you're concerned about COAM. Your class A are like crane machines and stuff like that, or you find it Chuck E. Cheese. I don't think...
Is there some kind, what about age limit as far as, is there the age limit, the a minimum age or maximum? I mean, not maximum, minimum, because I've seen teenagers, you know, around those machines before.
I'd have to look further, I'm not aware that there is. Of course, some might say that's purely for amusement. It's a coin-operated amusement machine.
Good way to start a gambling app, it does.
Understand.
Would these regulations be in zoning, or would they be in something else?
Typically, these are regulations that fall outside of zoning, and then would probably fall into a, you know, miscellaneous offenses type area.
So additional action beyond this would be required?
I would recommend that, yeah, if, if the county is considering enacting any of these 11, that, that, that'd be something separate and apart from the underlying zoning issues that y'all are thinking about.
Is it possible?
And I would also say, excuse me, I would also say I would prefer that it be separate and apart, because enacting zoning ordinances is a far deeper and more involved process than enacting general ordinances which would control COAM.
I think that would, if you had an ordinance that addressed it, speaking as a person who sits in an administration spot, it's a lot simpler to act on an ordinance that addresses that specific item than it is to start tying it back into zoning when the whole case could unravel. At least, that's, that's the way I would look at it.
Yes, there have been jurisdictions in the past that by regulating on the basis of zoning categories, you know, if you were to pass a law that says no, I don't know.
Can I give you an example?
Please.
The cabinet Atlanta require gas stations to have video surveillance. That is not part of zoning. It's a standalone ordinance that requires those uses to provide that surveillance camera.
But if you said, if you said all video cameras will be required in all businesses in a B one zoning, you have created a regulation based on zoning category, and in order to do that, you have to have a, have a public hearing in front of the planning commission with a recommendation to the board of commissioners. Thereafter, they would have to vote. If you regulate it outside of zoning, it simply is a regulation or an ordinance passed by your board of commissioners at an open meeting. It's a much simpler and streamlined process.
I think firmer as well.
But it, it's come up several times on, on previous zonings. We've had discussions about coin ops, and we haven't used it, you know, as a stip. So I think having it standalone would be better, that we wouldn't look at it on the case-by-case. There would just be one uniform ordinance, that if, if the county's looking at it for that reason.
Yeah, Mr. Steele, you're right. There's been applicants that have agreed to no COAMs. There's others that have said, I want my COAMs. And then there are recommendations that have come out of this body that go forward saying no COAMs, and then there've been decisions by the, by the full board authorizing the COAMs, and sometimes perhaps even allowing them to go forward with the COAMs. So it's a, it's been a varied treatment. And a lot of that turns on whether the applicant is agreeable to it or not.
And I, I fall pretty much in the same camp as wanting to make sure that there's not a proliferation of coin-operated, particularly for the gambling aspect of it. I don't have a disagreement with that. I just think that there is a better approach than trying to put that in through zoning. And again, it's my opinion only, that it's better to do that through an ordinance of the board of commissioners, so that it is the same regardless of what zoning category you're talking about. You already addressed coin-operated amusement machines in this ordinance, and that's what it is for Polley County, period.
And it answers the question more firmly than the zoning ordinance does, because zoning gets challenged all the time.
It would be like if we said you couldn't sell cigarettes, or vapes, or, I mean, we don't tell them what they can and can't sell in the store, do we? As long as it meets a, an ordinance, state, local...
Sell one to a 16-year-old.
Yeah, but, but when you look at, when we look at striking definitions and changing them, and some of those definitions that are striking are, are things that, you know, you may take it and say that, are you saying that I cannot sell that any longer? Is that not allowed in that use? Is that not a permitted use any longer? Or does those, do those...
No definitions being removed that's not being refined and replaced with something else. We're just, I don't like having a definition of a word that's never used, so when you have a redundant use, and you take out that use, take out the definition. So food and beverage retailers is being replaced by the more specific supermarkets and other grocery stores, except convenience stores, convenience retailers.
You're just decluttering the language.
Yes. Because I hate nothing more than looking at a zoning ordinance, which is a strange hobby to have, but, and you see a word defined, but then you never see the word. Our zoning ordinance used to have a lot of words defined that never showed up in the ordinance, because I think we copied and pasted someone's definitions, but perhaps took out some of the uses. So we're trying to, one of the things we did do is we made sure every, that's why we do want to add that automotive definition, because we have a use, and that definition we just forgot to put it in.
Board of Commissioners, anything further? Planning Commission, readdress?
So can I summarize? I think the recommendation, we are removing any changes to agricultural business for, for the research, taking no action on changing used merchandise at this time, but everything else, the definitions recommended, changing convenience, gasoline stations with convenience stores to a special use permit required in B one, B two, and I one. Adding truck stops to I one and I two.
What about the two or more that may come, convenience stores without gasoline? We have had two, one closed.
We've had two. If we take out the word convenience retailers, one of them has not renewed their business license, and the marshal bureau has reported that they are closed. So we have one. They would become illegal non-conforming use. And if we do not add convenience retailers back as a permitted use, that would be the last one.
But they are convenience retailers without gasoline, that's what they are.
Correct. Which we do have a definition for that, because we don't, we accept convenience retailers, so I think it's good to have the definition.
And I, I think there's, I think we had two, and I think the city of Dallas had one.
Maybe.
I saw on the, the parking, and that was one of the things I meant to bring up earlier, we've got the, the truck parking, it's gonna fall under what category?
We did not look at truck parking. It is still a standalone, let's see, it's an S U P in I one? Yeah.
I think the parking that you referenced was just the change that would be needed because the building sizes changed.
Well, in every use listed in the zoning ordinance has a minimum parking requirement. So when you take out, let's say gasoline stations, when you take out the use of gasoline stations, you need to replace that with gasoline stations with convenience stores, so that there's no, just like, if you have a word defined, it needs to be in a zoning district, and it needs to have a parking requirement. So the parking requirements that I referenced was just, we added some of these new uses, we added a minimum parking requirement.
Because I've noticed, like on 61, where the old Dollar General is, they've got the parking area out there that's a permitted parking, but their parking, 18-wheeler trailers out in the old parking lot out there that's not within the confines of the defined parking. So, you know, that, that can, how is that gonna fall?
In that particular instance, that actually is code enforcement that we're working with on that.
Okay, thank you. But I mean, that means be something that's defined, a defined parking area, like the truck stops.
We actually have that in the I one and I two district as special use permits. It is truck and trailer storage, and that was added in there...
Twenty-two.
May of 22.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Lippman, next time, can we get all the generic names of the gas stations so that we know this Big and Little one is the...
This was a technical study, so we did use the official names listed in the occupational tax permit for these businesses, so I cannot tell you the difference between...
Big and Little Scots.
Big and Little Scots, and... But we will work to get the familiar names for, an additional column for...
I'll say thank you for you and Chris and staff for putting all this together. It's a lot to organize and look up.
The first thing, when I do a study like this, that's why I've gone back to, I mean, this map, you always start with, you know, how many do we have? And I tried to color-code what was planned and what was proposed, it was just too hard. They're color-coded based on the type of, if it's standalone, or if it has retail. But, I mean, I kind of look at that, and I feel like we have, unless you've gotten a lot of Croker points, or you've gotten a lot of Costco points, I've never had to wait in line very long for gas, like Mr. Leggett did in Cincinnati.
Hey, when you get down to fumes, and you're looking at pushing...
Or in the late 70s.
So to move forward from this point, if we're gonna enter into receiving public comment, understanding the notes that you've given us as far as we're removing consideration of agricultural districts, agricultural business...
And used merchandise.
And used merchandise. Are you okay with us rolling forward, or do you want to just table it until the time is good?
I'll sit down and see if there's any public comment.
All right. Then at this time, I will open the Florida public comment for receiving comments on the recommended text amendments from staff regarding everything we've discussed previously. Anybody wishing to speak, would need to come forward to the likelector and sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Hearing none. At this time, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. And I will move forward, considering a recommendation to the board of commissioners regarding the text amendment ordinance, zoning ordinance, text amendments, excuse me. Does anybody wish to make a motion on recommendation for the text amendments?
I'm making a motion to approve and leave out the agricultural business district for further research, and to bring that back to us.
And the used merch, and the used merchandise?
And used merchandise.
So at this point, I have a motion to approve from Mr. Aston, I have a second from Mr. Leggett. At this time, all in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Well, thank you very much for your patience during the course of the meeting. Appreciate all the input and involvement of the planning commission and the board of commissioners, thank you. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn from Mr. Steele, second from Ms. Fitzgerald, all in favor. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Thank you very much for your time, and have a great day.